Seven o'clock, this is the regular meeting for the Monroe Planning Commission, Monday, December ninth, twenty-four. I'd like to call the meetings in order and have Hannah take the role.
Commissioners present in establishing a forum, Commissioners Blair, Bull, Dawkins, Lockhart, Lowe, Nugent, and Pedrino.
Thanks Hannah. Public comment, uh, time, uh, we allow three minutes for public comments. But it does not appear that we have anybody on the signup sheet, so we will move to old business. Item four point one, adopt findings of fact, proposed code cleanup phase one for Monroe Municipal Code Title Twenty-two, Unified Development Regulations. Leanne is our presenter this evening. Welcome.
Hello. I'm gonna share my screen, but let me get it going here, one moment.
Hannah's gonna close the door, because we're all here and I, we would have had a public here by now.
For six to be reviewed.
Exactly.
Okay, you guys see my screen?
Yep.
Fantastic, so, good evening Commissioners, we're here to finish up the code cleanup at Planning Commission. Quick rundown of how we got here, I've been before you three times to talk about our phase one code cleanup so far, including an introduction, continued discussion, and a public hearing, and I have also taken an introduction to city council. Uh, as part of the code amendment process, we have done a notice of application and a CIPA determination of nonsignificance, and through that whole process, we have not received any public comments on any of the proposed code amendments. Uh, in your packet tonight, you have the requested action, um, asking that the Planning Commission adopt the findings of fact in your packet. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Commissioners, any questions from the end? No, we'll let, uh, Melanie, uh, go through our requested action item. Melanie, are you available?
Yeah.
Do you mind making a motion?
You want me to motion?
Please.
And move that the Planning Commission adopt these findings of fact and conclusions, authorize the Chair of the Planning Commission to sign the findings of fact on behalf of the Commission, and recommend that the Monroe City Council approve the amendments to MMC Title Twenty-two Unified Development Regulations and MMC Five Point Forty-eight Licensing Zoning of Sexually Oriented Businesses.
Thank you, do I have a second? Liz is our second. Commissioners in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Good luck tomorrow night, Leanne, thank you very much.
Thank you Commissioners.
So she will be presenting before the, the, at a public hearing before the city council tomorrow.
Correct.
Correct.
And unfortunately, well, not unfortunately, we, we have the comp plan tomorrow night as well, so her public hearing is near the bottom of the picture.
So that's a coffee at seven o'clock or so.
Yes, that's my, that's my approach.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, four point two, twenty twenty-four Planning Commission Work Program, this is Kate's year-end review.
Yeah, thank you, so twenty twenty-four was really all about the Monroe Twenty Twenty-four Conference of Plan and sprinkled in there. You've got some introductions to middle housing, uh, you also successfully completed reviewing code amendments to the downtown commercial zoning district, so included in your packet is just an updated of what was originally proposed. There were a few items that got added that we weren't expecting, uh, and then the status, several of these will continue into twenty twenty-five. With that being said, I am working with my staff, trying to kind of start figuring out our schedule for twenty-five. There's still a lot of mandated items that we have to complete, and a couple of them are pretty meaty, like the critical area regulation update. So, just wanted to bring this to you, and it's an opportunity, um, to, to just have conversation. Um, I did include the list that, I hope I captured everything we discussed earlier in the year about other items that you were interested in that weren't already on, um, the agenda. Uh, in your agenda packet, I did include how you have your authority as a planning commission, both from the state as well as our municipal code, as a reminder, you are the research and workhorse really for the city council who approves your, um, uh, program of work. So that being said, do you have any questions? Do you want to discuss anything, any other items I need to add?
Fine.
What is the significance of the rent?
That's something, so that's where I, I did a change, so, for example, um, the UDR, we weren't sure when that was gonna get activated on the very first page, and that's what, um, oh, I'm sorry, that's with a comp plan, so I was hoping to get all of that accomplished, I was overly ambitious, thinking that we could do the citywide rezone and the code amendments with the conference of plan adoption, it's not gonna happen. So I've given us another six months, that will be done by, uh, June of twenty twenty-five, so I just changed the timeline on that. The next one, the critical areas, um, that really is not required by state law to be completed until December of next year, and I'm gonna need all that time, so I revised that as well. The items that were, um, added are on the second page of your packet, and that is, um, Anita brought to you the middle housing, which is not required, however, we are working on the multifamily tax exemption, and the city already adopted the Housing Action Plan, so that's part of the, that's one of the pieces to help us get to, um, providing housing for all in Monroe, so that was added, and we got grant funding for it, so that's why it got bumped up for twenty-four. Do you have another thought for the one? Okay. Um, and then the downtown commercial zone, we had, uh, that was not on our horizon, however, a few things happened, including the city purchasing property, and then we had the whole conversation about, do we have the right collection of uses in the downtown zone, and so that got added to your, uh, work plan. And then the final item that's getting added, uh, you have not seen it yet, but Anita will be coming to you in first quarter twenty twenty-five. The city working with all of the affected cities in Snohomish County had to update their Commute Tour Production Act. Uh, that is a state law, and it, it's for any jurisdiction that has a employer that has a hundred employees that arrive at work between, uh, six and nine AM, and so the city of Monroe has Department of Corrections, the school district, and then because of that, uh, and Canyon Creek, I believe, still is, um, an affected employer, and so we had to update our plan. So a lot of work has been done on the backend, uh, it does require code amendment, which will be coming to you next year. So that's what the, the rent's for. Yeah.
Twenty twenty-six is sign code?
I don't know, okay, we actually haven't been asked for that, believe it or not.
Okay.
Why you hate us?
Did you say the sign code?
Yeah, I was pretty clear, that was my bullet point.
So.
Those aren't fun.
No, they're not, at all, um, we talked about, and, and this isn't a, a done deal, but we've run into some issues with particular parts of the sign code that have resulted in some, um, sort of high visibility code enforcement cases. And so I've had some, we had some conversations about potentially doing some strategic changes in the, the round two or phase two code update, but, um,
Some clarifications rather than.
Yeah, exactly, less, not really policy decisions, but maybe, maybe some, some things that we can clarify, yeah, that's a good way of putting it.
Thank you.
We'll see if, if we're able to do that, because it's, it's one of those things, when you, when you sort of open the door to that, you start doing one thing here, it starts to sort of roll downhill a little bit, but we could use an update on our sign code for sure.
That, is that the, the gentleman that had the business downtown, that's, that calls it all this time?
But it's, it's been some other things as well, uh, that whole, that, that whole section of the code or the piece, the regulations that require, uh, a maximum coverage of windows, and there, I don't know, some, I don't, some ideas about how we might clarify that.
It's a matter of semantics, the way that you presented.
Yeah. No, that's pretty clear.
Well, I suppose if you wanna understand it, you can, but
Yeah.
It seemed rather straightforward to me. What do I?
Yes. So we'll see, but that, that's probably, I, it's not on our work plan to completely redo, redo the sign code.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I'll leave a note to myself.
Always so.
But everybody should, everybody that has a business in downtown Monroe should understand the reasons for a sign code and the aesthetics of signage, and why they're trying to, we are trying to make everything look good.
Yeah, and I, and I think that, that the biggest portion of that is probably an educational piece.
Yes.
So that, so that we have information for folks before they move forward on something, and then they're having to backtrack, because that's always, it's always harder to do that, because they pay for signage, or, or they, you know, design something, so getting that information out early, I think it's, it's probably, um, probably gonna be the biggest bang for our money.
Just if you're all curious, the sushi stop is working with staff to decrease the size of their window signage to be confined with a twenty percent, um, maximum area. Been raised a concern because of all the previous steps that has occurred down there recently.
Is the four rent sign getting smaller too, right above that?
Like, I feel like there has been a conversation about that sign before. And it wasn't.
There's a, there's an, there's an exemption for what are considered temporary signs, although when something, like, what's temporary?
That's the never really supported, yeah. It's on both sides of the, yeah, I don't think.
Yeah, I'm sure a lot of times we go use. And that dude probably knows.
Leanne has comments, she can add to it. For the four rent sign, are you talking about the, like, the cabinet sign? Is that what you're talking about?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, the sushi spot is going to be applying for a sign permit to change the one facing, um, Lewis Street. They haven't made a proposal for the one, if there's one facing Main Street, but they, they're working on that, so that should be coming down.
Well, thank you, Leanne. All right, so your program of work, uh, will probably be coming to you in early February, and then again, after the process for that is we'll have conversation, and then once we get a pretty good handle on what's moving forward, we'll take it to city council for their formal approval, and then start working, although we'll start working in January on some of the required work. That's it.
Any other questions Commissioners? Okay. Move on to new business.
So we're, we're very sad to be leaving two of our Commissioners, um, with that, we would like to take Jay Bull first, who's been on the commission for the past nine years, uh, he came on when the city was completing the last conference plan update in twenty fifteen. He got through the entire UDR change in twenty nineteen, which I understand was like a, Leanne's still on, it was like a five-plus-year process to get there, and, um, we are very sorry to see you go, but wanted to thank you so much for all of your, um, contributions to the community. Commissioners won't be the last seeing you. Thank you.
If you wanna stick around, maybe we can move that sign code off.
Maybe Jay can volunteer to do it in his spare time.
There we go.
And you welcome back in public comment anytime.
I will, yeah, it was good to see, uh, former Commissioner Jensen at one of the meetings, so, yeah, I'll pop in. Again.
When we're doing the sign.
Then, a thank you to Liz Nugent, who not only was on the Planning Commission, but was also on EDAB. She has served on the commission also through portion of the UDR code cleanup, or code change, and she helped us do, you're at the very end of that one.
Yeah.
And, uh, then helped us through this ten-year cycle of the conference of plan updates, so thank you so much for serving on the commission. Really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, do you want us to move?
No, you're good.
Okay. There we go. And we have, um, Kate, which, are you interested now or finish out our meeting? How would you like to enjoy that? Maybe finish that, okay. So just thank you so much, um, Lance and I were talking, actually about Friday, on just, or no, earlier today, on just how much it is to, to volunteer, you get a small stipend and there's a thank you, but it really is a lot of time and effort for you. We do this all day, we're used to it, but for you all, it's introduction to sometimes boring laws, sometimes frustration, and we just really appreciate all that you've done for us, so thank you.
Uh, I just also wanted to say thank you both, um, you were, you're the most senior people on the Planning Commission right now, and, um, you know, when I came on, both of you, uh, being welcoming and having a professionalism and cordial to, um, the way that the meetings are run and how we all treat each other, and so, um, thank you, and that, we're gonna continue to lead with that example, so thanks for welcoming me and everyone else like you have, and for the time that you've been here.
Good move.
Yeah.
Well, let's go for our discussion first, then we'll move for German, wanna make sure we get discussion items in, we'll start with Melanie.
I'll use this time to say thank you to both Jay and Liz for your service to our community, to our city on Planning Commission. Um, and you were also both here when I came on, and so I think this is gonna make me the senior-most member on Planning Commission, which is kind of, uh, crazy to think about, but the two of you have been, you know, a wealth of knowledge, um, throughout these processes, and that will continue on, um, and I know you two are both, you know, still in the community, still here, so, um, just appreciate, um, um, all that you've done to help all of us along the way, and I am so sorry I can't be there. Um, my illness from last meeting has actually turned into pneumonia, so I'm home and, um, trying to rest as much as possible, but I am so sorry I can't be there to, to say goodbye and enjoy the cake, but I hope you, you all have a good time after this meeting, and, um, everybody, take your vitamins and, uh, be careful, because there's a lot of nastiness that's going around the community right now, so, thank you, that's it.
Leanne?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much. Liz?
I just wanted to thank staff and everybody that I've had the opportunity to work with, I've had a fun time and tried to encourage others to replace us. Don't know how successful that was, but I've learned a lot, and I really appreciate everybody walking through it all. And yes, take your vitamins, because I am on day ten of whatever loveliness is running around. I'm pretty sure I'm not gonna be just with this person.
I wanna thank Jay for being, uh, welcoming, uh, welcoming me to the, to the commission as well as running a great meeting. Very smooth professional leader.
Chair.
And thank you for coming, so I get to see you.
I know, so what? Why I get sick all the time?
I'm concerned with this world, we all can be at the time. And Merry Christmas, we won't be seeing each other before Christmas, unless someone who's going to the council meeting tomorrow, we've been invited. We may see each other in a while, but other than that, Merry Christmas, be safe. Take your vitamins, get plenty of rest, and drink lots of the other.
I'm gonna echo, thank you, yeah, it's not easy to run meetings and quit, like, telling me everything, and, and kind of fun too, so, thank you. Thank you for your patience with all of us too, on learning all this, like, it is a lot, and, um, I think we did a lot this year, so. And happy holidays, and you know what's on our end?
Thank you.
I wanna echo, thank you very much, um, it's a shame that we're losing so much knowledge from both of you, and everything you guys have been through before us and seen and heard and learned about planning commission here in Monroe, so, um, again, thank you very much for, both of you, for being on the commission and the time and the years you've spent, um, we will, we'll be here continuing to learn and doing what we can for the city. So that's always good. I also want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, I will not be at the meeting tomorrow, but I will be on a plane on my way to Brussels.
Wow.
Tomorrow. I won't make that either way.
As in Europe?
Brussels?
Hmm.
As in Europe?
Yeah, in Europe.
Fly a long time?
Yeah, it's a long flight, so, um, because it's a Wednesday. Long flight and then nine hours ahead. So as, as you guys are talking about the stuff going around, um, I'm also meeting my daughter and her family, we'll be meeting as, we'll be there on Wednesday, and then they'll be there on Thursday, and the three grandkids and my daughter are all sick. And at this point, to the point of they're throwing us sick, so. That's part of the rest of it, if we, if we meet them. But anyways, uh, have a great holiday and see everybody in twenty twenty-five.
Brandon?
Uh, yep, thank you to staff and the Commissioners and the ones that are leaving, and happy holidays, see you next year. I will be at the meeting tomorrow night, I don't know if you're keeping tally on that, my, um, reappointment is up for tomorrow night, so I will be right back.
And I just wanted to thank you all, thank you for, you know, sticking through this conference of plan this year, attendance, participation, take care of the new Commissioners, let them ask questions, tell them to ask questions, this is a really, really good staff. So make sure they know, you know, how things work, they can ask questions, if they have questions, they can get answers, if not, right then, you know, by the next meeting, so make sure that everybody participates, needs seven opinions to make decisions, so. Make sure, they're gonna be overwhelmed, and they're gonna go, ah, this is like drinking from a fire hose, but just let them, you know, let them get up to speed and just, you know, coach them along and, and stick together. Make sure they're comfortable, so everybody shows up every week, whether it be Zoom or in person. Thanks, I wanna thank staff, of course. Uh, especially how well you guys put the conference plan together. Nobody cried and quit from this plan here, staff didn't.
They're still here, they're still here.
Yeah, so, that's super positive.
Well, it doesn't get approved until tomorrow, so.
You couldn't be back at it.
Actually, we will be back at it, um, the date of this application was approved by the county council last Thursday?
Yeah.
Last Thursday, so we already have a comp plan amendment for next year.
Oh, wow. The UGA expansion. So.
Yeah, but just the fact that you guys, you know, Amy's help got that downtown co-admission, you know, pursued very, very quickly, it's just, it's very nice, very good, appreciate all of you guys, and lady means and that kind of thing.
We're vampires.
Only on Mondays.
We own.
And Tuesdays. Tuesdays are usually longer.
Lance, what do you have for us?
Um, well, I wanna thank, I wanna thank Jay and Liz as well, I, I was looking at my calendar, and I realized in six days I won't have been here for three years, so I, so when I came in, we were, we were already working on the comp plan, but more of, of kind of background stuff and consultant selections and whatnot, but I have to say that the, um, with your leadership, the, the, working with the Planning Commission was, was very easy, and I was concerned about coming into a new job and being like, yeah, the first thing you get to do is a comp plan update, and what the heck do you know about the community, right? But, uh, this whole group really had made that easy, and one of the things, in my experience, that I look at the success of of planning commissions is almost can be gauged by what happens after things leave here. And I, I've, I've worked in communities where that next step is not necessarily that smooth, for a variety of reasons, but, but the trust that city council has and the planning commission, it could, I mean, in the, in the comp plan project, you had more touches of the comp plan than anybody, so, and it's a testament that all of these projects, when we go to city council, that they, and, and, you know, they, we've had faces change on there, but there's a lot of trust and understanding that you've really gone through it, and, and their job is, is made a lot easier, which makes our job easier, but, um, it's been really helpful. I like working with planning commissions, because we can have discussions, a little bit more freewheeling than you can when you go to city council, and you've got twenty items on an agenda, and I know that, that I've seen everybody here at least once at community meetings or community events that we did as a part of the comp plan, and that's, that's always really encouraging in the conversations that I've had with folks here about, and I'm concerned that you've gotten the community and helping me to get up to speed was, was really helpful, so, thank you for the two that are leaving, and thank you to the, to the others who are still going to be here, and will move forward, and will have a good time in twenty twenty-five.
Kate?
So my only, um, item for this evening is thank you Brandy for, uh, reapplying to the position. We need two more Commissioners, um, she was the only one, and so if you have friends, you know of anyone, um, I did reach, yeah, I reached out when the public hearing occurred for the, uh, comp plan. I reached out to the entire Strawberry Lane neighborhood, and one gentleman, um, reached out to me, but he did not apply, so I'm not sure.
Can you be out of, um, the city limits to do that?
So, the way it's written is, um, there is a provision that the mayor may appoint one individual who lives within the urban growth area. So if we do not get, um, applicants within the city, there's the ability to have one, but they have to be in our urban growth area. Yeah. So reach out to your friends, colleagues, um, there's an opportunity. And other than that, it has been a pleasure this year, it was a lot of work, and I just really appreciate, especially Kelsey, you went through every document, Brandy, you gave me your, your comments, and just all of you, just having questions and discussion. I think the final product is a really good comp plan, we've got a lot of policy direction. Um, I've been going through some of our codes also, looking at, all right, so this is what we did, and I'm realizing some things are already in there, like the native, um, vegetation. You don't have to do that now, it's in the, it's already in our landscaping chapter, so, um, I am anxious, nervous, excited about the work we have to do next year, um, we will be doing a citywide rezone. The more challenging stuff to me, besides the critical areas ordinance, which can be. The more challenging stuff to me, besides the critical areas ordinance, which can be contentious, is trying to figure out, really the challenge for me will be the downtown. How, how do we figure out the main street and the downtown? Trying to preserve those beautiful buildings while at the same time encouraging more people to move in and then mix the uses. So Lance and I will be putting on our thinking caps, figuring that one out. And then Alex with Meg, his team actually will be staying on a little bit longer next year. There's a little bit of money left in the budget to help with the middle housing. So Anita is a project lead on that. So I'm pretty excited that you might have an opportunity to, to see him again next year. So other than that, have a wonderful holiday season. I'm definitely taking your advice for my vitamins. So thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate all your work.
Well, Liz and Jay, I just want to say thank you so much. I came into this role with no experience being the secretary to any board commissioner committee, kind of knowing how to take minutes. And you guys were so welcoming to me and just really made me feel super comfortable. And sorry, I'm a crybaby. And I'm just really going to miss working with both of you. And you have contributed so much to your community. And we really do appreciate all of the work that you have put into Monroe and it's recognized. So thank you. Other than that, great work this year, everyone. It's, you did an amazing job on the comprehensive plan, long hours. September was crazy. September was crazy. I don't want to think about September, but you did really, really great work this year. And you should all be really proud of yourselves. And tomorrow night is going to be awesome getting that signed. So other than that, the first day of Hanukkah is on the 25th this year. So that's going to be just a really awesome day with a lot of celebration for me. So I hope everyone has a happy holiday season and stay safe and warm. And.
I'm making a motion to adjourn the meeting.
For the second. Kelsey seconds. Commissioners in favor?
I, I support that motion.
Opposed? Okay, we're good.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thanks, Melanie.
Time for cake.
Thanks, Leanne.
Enjoy that cake. Bye, you guys.